Good evening, everyone. Are we, do we have proper connectivity with all here? So I see a lot of microphones on mute. You might want to, if I don't hear from you, then I'm going to assume that you're hearing me and that you don't, you're not incurring any challenges. So with that, I'll ask that people draw their attention to the flag that is over my right shoulder and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic. Which stands for one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
Thank you to the entire board, to our staff, to the people that are interested in matters that are before the city this evening. It goes without saying, but I will do it anyway, these are unprecedented times. People are understandably frightened, anxious, concerned, and they're ready to get back to normal. We, as leaders of this wonderful community, owe it to our residents to do everything humanly possible, support them through these difficult times, and to function as a collaborative unit in discharging our duties which advance our collective best interests. It will not be easy, it will not be quick, and it will not be without a lot of adjustment. I personally ask you to be patient with me and with your entire team of professionals in this building and throughout our city. Know one thing. Know that at all times, we are doing our very best. We're doing our very best to participate as that collaborative unit that I described and to discharge our duties in the best interests and to the collective well-being of our community. I'm sure there will have more remarks to that effect. I know I will at other points in the agenda, but that is how I'd like to start this evening, and that is by asking for your patience and asking for your continued support. I have never participated in a meeting like this, not professionally and not as a public official, so bear with me, please. If you are seeking recognition, the lights that sit in front of me at every meeting for the last 15 years will not light up. I'm told that you can electronically raise your hand. I will do my best to, my eye on that. I'm looking at three different screens and trying to manage our agenda. A raising, a physical raising of your hand is as valuable to me as any. Also, what I'm going to do, what I'm going to attempt to do is, as I hear people make motions and seconds, I will try to, for purposes of the record, recap that. So for instance, on my screen in front of me, Alderman Butler is sitting to my right, and if I hear her make a motion, that isn't captured in the record. I'm going to summarize that, saying, "Motion made by Alderman Butler, seconded by Alderman Frouchy," and so on and so forth. So I'm doing that for purposes of assisting our city clerk, who is charged with documenting these actions, and I hope I get it right all the time. If I don't, bear with me, and if it needs correcting, we should correct it for purposes of the record. With that, I'll call our meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Alderman.
You've cut out.
Was it Alan? I didn't get the...
Yeah, I can't hear.
Okay, so I'll try to, we don't want to talk over each other, so I'll try to alert people that they are or are not being heard clearly. Madam Clerk, you're not coming through clearly. Start over, please.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Benegas.
Here.
Alderman Butler.
Here.
Alderman Frouchy.
Here.
Alderman Holman.
She's muted. Alderman Holman, you're on mute.
Here.
Alderman Mortland.
You're on mute, sir.
Here.
Thank you.
And Alderman Reuter.
Here.
Mayor Dalton is presiding, and we do have a quorum via video conference.
Thank you. The minutes from our meeting of March 9th, the regular meeting of March 9th, have been distributed in your materials. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, you got to give us a little time unless Alderman Frouchy moved approval, second by...
Alan.
Alderman Allen, thank you. Discussion. Alderman Reuter, you have a little thumbs up on your screen. Okay, now it's gone. Thank you. Seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as written and distributed. We also have a meeting from, it was done by facsimile transmission. It's from the date of March 23rd, and I'll entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
So moved.
Alderman Allen moved approval. Alderman Frouchy seconded. Does that, is there a discussion? Seeing none, those minute, meeting minutes will stand approved as written and distributed as well. We're on the topic of hearing from citizens. This is, it was publicized that anyone wishing to address the board on matters of interest or concern at this general point in the agenda could do so by written comment to be submitted to our city clerk. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments?
No, for the record, I know of a general nature. All of the ones I receive will be entered at specific times during the agenda.
The next item on our agenda is the topic of hearings. We have four this evening. The first one is a public hearing to review a request from Tony Frisella of Frisella Nursery on behalf of the owners, Mike and Casey Reiney, for approval of a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a children's playhouse located at 1414 Topping Road in the suburban estate zoning district. Declare that public hearing open and ask our city clerk to please enter any exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on March 27th. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of that hearing posted at the municipal center and on the subject property and mailed to owners within 300 feet with a list of those owners attached. And exhibit number three is bill number 2018.
Thank you. I'll ask our city administrator, Mr. Shelton, to comment on a technical correction.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to draw to your attention and to the board's attention, Bill number 20-18, Section 2G, currently as written states that the evergreen screen proposed by Planning and Zoning should be on the south and west side of the subject property. Actually, that's a Scribner error. It should read the south and east side. The plans in your packet are correct. They reflect this as recommended by Planning and Zoning. That will be corrected by the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. For purposes of the record, I want to note that Tony Frisella is on the line.
On the line. Tony, mute your phone.
I'm trying to do, bear with me, please.
Hey.
Okay. Sorry about that.
The mayor's still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As I indicated, this would not be easy, and I was right.
I apologize.
But that's just absolutely fine. Thank you for being with us, Mr. Frisella. I'm advised that you are making yourself available for questions for purposes of this application. The floor is open to the board. Seeing, Alderman Reuter, thank you.
I'll have a question. So this is just a large structure. This is something that, I don't know if I'd even see something this big at Longview Park in terms of size. I'm curious in terms of the rest of the house for having something this big, and then also what type of precedent that would set for town and country.
Mr. Frisella, did you hear the question?
I did. I don't know that it's as big as anything you see at a park. It's barely contained to one square area. Does have one slide on it. It has a small, very small climbing wall. Does have a roof over it and a very small deck. Has a ladder down. Pretty basic, but again, typically, these commercial playgrounds that they sell, or not commercial, residential playgrounds that they sell it, some of the playgrounds, those places are bigger, actually the structure. Height-wise, it may be a little taller, but not nearly as, the girth and the width of it, not so much.
Thank you. Further inquiry. Alderman Benegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you give us an idea of the views from, in all directions from this playground, from the properties that are adjacent? In the presentation, I don't see any views from the adjoining property. Can you help us understand what the neighbors of this property might see in regards to the playground?
Now, they're going to see a lot of evergreens with our proposed plan. There was already a lot of evergreen there, but they were shorter, being that they were actually smaller evergreens. Now, we're putting in some, I believe they're 12 to 16-foot Norway spruce, very heavily foliated. These are not skimpy plants at all. They're very wide, full, thick evergreens, and they're planted, well, closer than I would normally plant them in a location like this. So they're pretty tight together. You can see, if you can see the plan, I have it pulled up in front of me here, they are actually staggered a bit, too, so, which allows us to place them even closer together.
So based on your assessment, you'd say that, from all the adjoining properties, that this playhouse wouldn't, cannot be seen?
I would find it very hard to be seen, and in fact, we could even berm it up a little bit to even create more height of the evergreens. And as you well know, Norway spruce get very large anyway, so it would just be a short matter of time before they actually covered, even if they were missing any one point. So let's say the tip of the roof would stick out a little bit. These spruce get big pretty fast. The first year or two, they don't grow much. After that, they grow relatively quickly. We're planting them in good soil, so they should take off and do very well.
Alderman Frouchy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So at Planning and Zoning, this did pass, however, it was not unanimous. There were some concerns about the view from neighboring properties. We did, as a board, receive a letter from one resident who lives next door to this property, who did send pictures of the structure from their side of the fence, and it is a very clear view directly into the play structure and quite close. I know that the owners of the home who are building the play structure did build it towards the back of their properties, not as close to their house, but on the one side, it is quite close. I guess the question that I have is, I understand that you're going to plant and you're going to put some trees in. If that landscaping isn't adequate to provide proper buffering from the neighboring property, will the homeowner be willing to go back and add more? And I say this because it's very difficult to imagine what, you know, additional trees will do in terms of screening until they've actually been put in place and actually started to grow. But I know that the pictures that I received from the neighboring property, and all of us as a board received from that neighboring property, do very clearly show the full structure from their house.
I'm going to assume it's probably on the south side, then.
It's the Monzel property?
I'm not familiar with that would be the south or the east. The south side, I actually have it covered pretty well on both sides, and I think it might be beneficial to involve the homeowner, should this go through, involve that homeowner to help us place those spruce, so they do get the full benefit.
I know, I would certainly appreciate that. I think that it is, the pictures that we sent show it very clearly from their patio. So it's not just, they see it from a corner of their yard. It's very clear right from their patio.
Yeah, I think we'd be willing to work with them, and I know the homeowner would be willing to work with them. You know, even some of the ones that, and again, I don't know if you all have the drawing in front of you.
Yes.
But the, some of the ones on the south side there, that kind of protrude more towards the front of the house, I think even some of those may not be as beneficial and could possibly be moved around a bit. So I don't think that's, nothing's set in stone here, but I think we'd be very willing to work with anyone there.
So the home in question that sent the photos is at 12855 Kent Manor Drive, and it, they put it's in the southeast corner, so it, I'm assuming that's the house behind this property, if it's on Kent Manor, since...
It's, then I know which house it is, so it's just, if you can see where the play structure is.
Yes, very clearly.
If you go directly to, oh boy, I just lost it. If you go directly to the right of the play structure.
Okay.
It splits the three spruce from the five or six spruce that were in front of that. So they would, those three, the last three, are actually what would be blocking that house. So again, I think we could move a couple of these towards the back a bit more. I really, I'm leery of planting them any closer together than they are.
Right.
Because if you know evergreens, they, over time, if they're too close together, they will actually start getting thin from the bottom up. I would rather give them some light and some room to expand into each other, that they don't eventually start to lift themselves up, and then you've got the same problem.
Okay.
I would request that.
Frisella, I'm, what the question was, are you, as the representative and the professional and the applicant, willing to work with this particular and other surrounding landowners? And the question was very clearly answered, yes.
Yes.
So that, in terms of where the particular plantings go, I think that's Alderman Frouchy was encouraging there to be local communications, and it's a good question, and it was asked and answered. Alderman Reuter was next, seeking recognition.
Thank you. So my initial question is about the size. When I reflected a little bit more, I see a lot of these same-sized playgrounds around town. I just, not sure if, Mr. Frisella, you experiencing the same thing, or if you have experienced building these. My question is, the eight-foot, that seems a little bit outdated, based on what you see at a lot of these playgrounds, of course. So I would, that makes me think that, it's kind of odd to see this come before us, because I thought it's a little odd to have a playground come before the Board of Aldermen.
I guess I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Do you see these frequently, the size? Is this something out of the ordinary in terms of your perspective?
No, I think we've done a few of these in the past, and we're not a big playground builder by any means. We're really more of a landscape company. This was, and of course, it's not finished yet, but it was very tastefully done. It's a rough sawn cedar, so it's a, it's a rather nice-looking unit. A lot of the ones you see, again, that are sold residentially and commercially are more of a redwood, smaller timbers, more of a, more of a sticky sticker, I don't know how to explain it to you, more of a stick-built-looking structure. This is a nicer siding, rough sawn cedar, you know, nice roof and so on.
Thank you. Alderman Holman was next, seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to the resident who sent in an email today, we have traded conversations throughout the day. The homeowner did not have the most updated landscape that we have in front of us tonight. She is satisfied, but I did hear Mr. Frisella say, one, the homeowners of the project will work with this neighbor. He's entertaining, also doing a berm. I'll pass that information along to the homeowner who sent in an email tonight, and I appreciate that being on the record.
Sure, not a problem. I do want to make one thing clear, when I say a berm, I'm not talking about a six-foot-high berm, but I can get them up about three feet in the air, which is going to make a big difference.
We'll take it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments that you have received, which you wish to... Alderman Benegas is seeking recognition first.
I can wait for the public comments, Mayor.
No, sir, go ahead, please proceed.
Okay. Mr. Frisella, I heard you say it's not done yet. Has construction already begun on this?
Yes, it has. That was the whole problem with this to begin with, when we asked about a playset. It's a long story. It's definitely all our doing, but my operations manager, when he checked, he didn't sound like it was going to be a big deal. They had it started already, and we have a stop-work order on it.
Unfortunately, Mr. Frisella, it is a big deal, and I hope that's widely recognized now.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, he's been, he's been thoroughly talked to about it, let's put it that way.
Thank you.
So if I might, Mayor, continue. How much has been completed, Mr. Frisella?
I'd say it's pretty close. I don't believe the roof's on it, but I believe the sides are all up.
So these pictures that are presented, these aren't conceptual ideas? This is what's actually sitting on the ground?
The pictures that you're seeing?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know exactly what, are you photographing?
The packet that was presented?
The packet that is presented is what is going, that's intentionally what's going to be put up.
So Mayor, I'm wondering if...
Those, that is the structure. That's what the structure's going to look like.
So, Mayor, I'm wondering if a little background information might be helpful for the Aldermen?
Yes.
Mr. Gregowitz, would you come off mute, please, and tell us, fill us in here?
Sure. We were out there doing inspections, normal inspections on the home, and our inspector noticed that they were building something out in the backyard, and he investigated further and found out it was a playground. Well, that's when we issued the stop-work order because of the size of the structure. It needed to get a special use permit, and that's what's got us to this point right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please enter any public comments?
I will be submitting an email with two photos from Sheila Monzel. It's the email that's been referred to several times throughout the hearing. It was dated April 12th and consists of three pages total.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comments or inquiry, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The next item on our agenda is a, and Mr. Frisella, I think that concludes your involvement this evening. You're welcome to depart at any time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, all of you. Thank you.
The second, the next item on our agenda is another public hearing. It's to review a request from Walter and Kimberly Ann Brower. They are the owners of certain property for approval of a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a pool, located at 23 Brookwood Road in the Estate Zoning District. Declare that public hearing open and ask our city clerk to please enter any exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on March 27th. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of that hearing posted at the municipal center on the subject property and mailed to owners within 300 feet with a list of those owners. And exhibit number three is for 2019.
Thank you. There is a presenter, I'm advised, on the lines, David Williams. I'm sorry. I don't see him on the line either. Is Mr. Williams with us this evening? That's unfortunate. Okay, so the materials have been distributed to, and I understand, considered by the board. The floor is open for inquiry. And I am always, for great deference to the board, when matters come before you, and there is not someone here to address any questions or concerns. Inasmuch as there are, the next three all relate to this topic, for purposes of the public record, there is no representative of the applicant here. My inquiry to the Alderman Frouchy. Were you seeking, were you seeking recognition?
I was trying to. I'm not sure if I did it correctly.
Right, let me just complete my sentence. It, I would, it's up to the board as to how they want to proceed. We can defer these and have them rescheduled, if that's of your interest, because it's just absolutely unacceptable in my mind that there's not a representative to address any questions, comments, or concerns. If the board is comfortable proceeding, I'll defer to your wishes. Alderman Frouchy is seeking recognition.
So all three of these matters came before Planning and Zoning. I was going to request a continuance. I do think that there are a number of items that I think it's important for the board to be able to hear from the presenter. There were a number of questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think it would be helpful, given the magnitude of the projects in these particular requests. I think it's important that we have a presenter, so I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Thank you, Alderman. Before you do that, counsel, is there a particular process or record that need to be made prior to recognizing the motion?
There are no public comments to be entered into the record. I did not receive any for this item or the next two.
And, you can, we can hear you, you don't need to, you're...
Oh, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, I think you've made a sufficient record of it, a motion to continue, we'll push it off until the next meeting. I assume you're moving to continue the public hearing?
Correct.
Yes.
Alderman Frouchy's moved to continue the public hearing, and does that motion to continue gaining second?
Second.
It does, by Alderman Butler. Discussion regarding the continuance motion. Seeing none, all of the opinion, the continuance motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Cards, I love it. In any of the contrary... And any of the contrary opinion, nay. I've heard no, uh, the ayes appear to have it. The green cards that showed up, thank you, Madam Clerk, um, do have it and that matter is continued. Counsel, can I continue the other two or do I need to, do I need to bring them up before the board and then entertain a continuance?
I think you can continue them together, since you didn't continue all three of it once, I think you can continue the other two together. Can you hear me right away?
I certainly can.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to continue the other two public hearings that relate to the same overall property.
So moved?
Frauuchy moved for continuance, Alderman Butler seconded it, discussion. Seeing none, all of the opinion that continuance motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're on the topic of appointments and I had, um, I've been working to bring these appointments forward and, um, and I, out of deference to the board, we decided to handle all appointments individually and not vote them en masse, which was made clear to me at the March 9th meeting. I asked for comments and Alderman Reuters approached and we had a very good discussion regarding some concerns that he had. I know from the, from the topic, the general topic, that others on the board have concerns as well. And so, uh, in respect of the Attorney General's guidance on matters of, of public interest in open meetings, I am not proceeding with these appointments for that reason and for the fact that the two remaining individuals that are, are subject to our ordinance requiring physical presentment, uh, before the board and, and standing for inquiry are not available this evening. So those commissioned three appointments, uh, including the Board of Adjustment in Planning and Zoning will be taken up soon. We're on the topic of communications and reports. And I will begin, uh, a very brief report, but as I mentioned in my opening statements, we, we, these are, these are difficult times and it adds a degree of, uh, of, um, significance to our, the discharge of our responsibilities. We also need to recognize the healthcare workers in our community who are risking their own lives to protect others. And, uh, and I, uh, wish to recognize Alderman Reuters. He is in a position, a very significant position and he has a leading role in that regard. And, um, like all healthcare workers in the community and throughout the region, Alderman Reuters deserves our deepest respect and appreciation as to his healthcare colleagues. Also, our first responders, they are being diligent in, um, taking precautions to protect themselves and the community, um, as they, as they discharge their duties to keep us safe and continue to protect, uh, our community. Our first responders put themselves in harm's way every day and we, uh, they are very much deserving of our deepest appreciation and respect. Day-to-day operations at City Hall continue among these, amid these challenges. And, uh, Mr. Shelton and his team, including our city clerk and all the professionals that, uh, serve this community are functioning in creative ways, Chief Cavens especially, are functioning in creative ways to do the things that they do as well as anybody in their field. And, um, and they also deserve our, our deepest appreciation and respect. Now more than ever is a time to, uh, support our local businesses. And, uh, I, out of necessity, um, rely on carryout food, among other things, um, including the internet. And so, uh, when there, when you have an opportunity to support our local businesses, please do, do so. In that regard, everyone on this, uh, on this board and on this call knows that this city relies on, uh, sales tax revenue and, um, and we are taking a very deep look at our budget situation. Alderman Allen is, uh, is engaged in those conversations. His rights, our finance director, Mr. Shelton and others, and we are critically analyzing all of our expenditures and looking for ways to continue to do what we do, um, in the, with, with making the least intrusive alter, uh, changes to the way we function. The floor is open for further communications and reports. Seeing none, Mr. Shelton, do you have a, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Mortland?
I just wanted, uh, the Public Works Commission is going to meet on the next, next Monday at the 20th, not at our normal time of 7:00 PM, but we're going to be at 4:30, so we're carrying on. Uh, it'll be a Zoom meeting and then the Public Infrastructure Task Force is at its final meeting, but it's, it's going to be delayed so we can meet in person.
Thank you, I appreciate that approach. Uh, Mr. Shelton, you have a report for us?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just to follow up and echo your comments, I appreciate that very much as, as all of the board is aware, but for maybe any residents who may be tuning in via YouTube, that we are still carrying on all the work of the city. We are in, in full operation, we are running in split shifts, we're telecommuting, we're practicing social distancing. So we want to maintain the safety of not only the employees, uh, but obviously our residents, uh, business people, visitors. So we are continuing to operate, uh, we are, when we're not on site, we're telecommuting. Uh, and I do want to really thank the staff, uh, under difficult situation. Everybody's, uh, making the appropriate, uh, adjustments to, to carry on that business. And so, uh, everybody's been doing a fantastic job, appreciate the support of the board. And we are continuing, uh, not only currently reducing expenses, eliminating expenses, continuing to meet as a staff and will continue to update the board. I would like to, uh, Mayor, with your approval, turn it over to Chief Cavens for just a couple of brief updates from the Police Department.
Thank you. Chief Cavens?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board of Aldermen, citizens, I just wanted to make sure that, um, all of you are aware that you can rest assured, your police department stands at the ready to continue to provide responsive and exemplary police services to our community. Over the last four weeks, we've equipped all TC PD personnel with proper personnel protective equipment, adjusted shift change and work schedules to minimize and mitigate exposure risks. We've modified our response protocols to protect officers and the citizens. Adopted exposure plans developed by the St. Louis County Emergency Operations Center and we co-authored a mutual aid agreement with our West County neighbors to ensure, uh, any support to ensure any impact on our police force will be mitigated by their support. All the men and women of the Police Department continue to move onward with optimism that, uh, this crisis will be over soon and continue to come in day in and day out and do their job at 100%.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to your team that, that's out there taking care of us every day. I didn't, I didn't notice and I apologize, the electronic hand raising, I'm not really good at that yet, so this works so much better for me personally, but I did note there is a, uh, electronic hand wave by Alderman Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to, um, reiterate and very much appreciate the, the staff, everything that's being done and certainly talk to the chief and, uh, just, you know, our role of government is public safety number one. And I did talk to, uh, I did talk to Pam today about, um, the audit that is in existence and I just wanted to fill people in because we, we possibly would have had meetings or be ready to have some meetings. The Shawalter and Jabory did finish the field work, uh, today and we're in the process of answering questions and moving forward. So we will be having that audit, uh, review and documents to look over, but it will probably be, um, in May, possibly later in May.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Frauuchy was also electronically seeking recognition.
Thank you. I wanted to let everybody know that our planning and zoning meeting scheduled for this coming Wednesday, um, has been canceled. One of our applicants has withdrawn at this time and the other three items on our agenda, we believe, should have, uh, the opportunity for the public to come and present, uh, in person. Um, as a result, we will not be having, um, our April meeting, we will, uh, resume in May.
Thank you. Alderman Reuters?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for the kind comments. Uh, I think Town and Country is very lucky to have a, a hospital like Missouri Baptist, uh, within its border. It has been a privilege working here and, and all the, uh, support and love that has been shown by people in the community has been very much, uh, felt and received, so thank you.
You're very welcome, Alderman, well deserved. Uh, further reports. Alderman Benegas?
Thank you, Mayor, just want to make a brief comment that it's at times like these that the foresight of people that have gone before us is really affected. None of us could ever dream that our parks would be closed. And so the trails that, that people have, uh, put together over the years is now a major resource of our community. So, uh, maybe none of them are on the line here, but we thank those that have gone before us that were, saw, saw the importance of the trails and, uh, made them a reality.
Thank you, Alderman. We are now on the topic of unfinished business. The, um, first item on our agenda is, oh, I've got a note, um, that, that, uh, there is a, a very substantial and real interest in our PDD, um, moratorium. The public hearing and the legislation will be scheduled as soon as the, uh, the public is allowed to participate in that. There are no applications and none anticipated, so time is not of the essence, but that does not diminish the seriousness and, and the substance of this particular issue. It will move forward, um, in, in the very near future as soon as possible so that it would, allows for maximum public participation and consideration. That's just a, uh, that's, that's just a notation. Uh, we are on item number one, it's bill number 20-17, co-sponsored by Alderman Reuters, Mortland and Frauuchy. Without objection or a city clerk, please read that bill for a second.
Bill number 27 is an ordinance approving an amended final site development plan for the development known as Marie Deville, City of Town and Country, Missouri, with conditions to be complied with and authorizing certification of the amended final site development plan. And Mayor, if I could, I'll go ahead and enter 15 emails consisting of 21 pages into the record. These emails were previously distributed to the board.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve bill 20-17.
So moved?
Alderman Frauuchy's moved approval, does that gain any second?
Second.
Alderman Butler seconded the motion, the matters before the body, uh, discussion. I understand that the applicant would like to make a brief presentation, somebody from Marie Deville on our transmission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is John Jokas, counsel for Marie Deville. Uh, joining me on the line are Fritz Weisehan and Fred Weisehan from Marie Deville and, uh, also our project architect, John Odom, who I believe you can hopefully see on the, uh, screen tonight. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone for your time and your consideration, especially in these difficult, uh, circumstances and unusual, unusual circumstances and we appreciate the work that, that the board is doing this evening. We're here to request, uh, that the board approve an amendment to an existing final site plan under section 405-260A9 of the city's code with respect to the Marie Deville property located on 20.6 acres approximately at 13, 900 Clayton Road. I'll mention that this is not a rezoning, this is not a, a PDD that we're, uh, seeking. It's an amendment to a site plan that's in existence and has been in existence for a number of years, actually since 1992.
Hey, John, this is, I'm sorry, this is Fritz. Could, uh, you enable, or could somebody enable the sharing feature on mine?
It's enabled, please proceed.
Fritz, do you have what you need there?
I got it now, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much, apologies. Just as a quick refresher, Marie Deville was founded in 1960 and has been operated continuously on this site. Since then, it's expanded from time to time over the intervening six decades. Was originally, uh, part of unincorporated St. Louis County and since 1981 has operated under a conditional use permit that was, uh, approved by St. Louis County. In 1983, the property was annexed into the City of Town and Country and, as I mentioned, in 1992, Town and Country approved a final site development plan that has governed this property in, in the intervening, uh, two, almost three decades at this point. Of note, that 1992 site plan, and I think Fritz can, can hopefully point to it here in a second, contemplated several, uh, additional buildings that, uh, some of which have been built already, some of which have not yet, uh, been built. And, and two of the buildings that we're here to request tonight were, were contemplated in that 1992 plan, just in slightly different forms. So the amendment that we're seeking, and you can see the two buildings that are circled in green on the slide that's currently before you, shows the approximate location of the, uh, buildings that we're proposing to build now, just again in slightly different form. Let me back up for a moment. The reason why we're here and the reason why we're having this conversation is that in the intervening, uh, couple decades since 1992, the, uh, business, uh, and, and the, and the continuum of, of care that Marie Deville seeks to provide has changed and evolved. Hopefully most of you are familiar with our facility. We really do endeavor to provide a continuum of care to our residents, enabling them to have options from independent living village to skilled nursing. Over the years, we've seen a significant move from what were formerly, uh, dual occupancy rooms to single occupancy rooms. A second trend we're seeing is that many of our residents, um, are now seeking sort of middle ground of care between, uh, independent living and, and skilled nursing. And hence, we, there, there's a need for, for many of our current residents and we anticipate many of our future residents to have that middle ground of assisted living. Those two changing trends in providing the highest quality care are really would have driven these proposed amendments. The first is the, the west building addition, which you can see on the slide that's for you, it's the, um, Oklahoma shaped, uh, building in black that was circled in green towards the north side of the property. Uh, that's anticipated to be a 7,800 square foot addition, two stories featuring 19 rooms. The second is the east, what we're calling the Eastlake Building, which would be assisted living. Uh, it would contain approximately 28,000 square feet, featuring 16 units and community space, also two stories. The, the slide that's currently showing on your screen depicts again the relative location of the west addition and the Eastlake Building under the 1992 plan and under what's proposed currently. What's of significant importance, we'd like to point out of the two buildings, if you'll, uh, direct your eyes to the portion of the slide that says 1992 approved plan. On the far southeastern corner of the site of the graphic there, you'll see two, uh, purple shaded buildings. Those are buildings that according to the 1992 site plan, uh, we are permitted to build currently. And as you can see, they, uh, run right up to the building lines on the south and east side of the property. We, we would prefer at this point to amend the site plan, could not only, again, revise the, the, the Eastlake and West Building additions, but in fact, in recognition of that, to remove the two buildings at the southeastern corner of the site. The Weisehan family, as most of you recognize, oh- The Weisehan family, as most of you recognize, hopefully have been great neighbors and have also been terrific stewards for Marie Deville. They they believe that these amendments to the plan are what's needed for their business at this time, and this is the best way, this is the best way for Marie Deville to continue providing top-level care, highest-quality care to the residents. We began discussions in the city about ten months ago. Our first meeting, Weisehan's first meeting with Mr. Shelton and Mr. Spencer was in May twenty nineteen. Since that time, consistent with our focus on being a good neighbor, we've endeavored to conduct several non-required public meetings in an attempt to solicit feedback for neighbors, residents, and other stakeholders. Those have included open forums that we held on July fifteenth, November fifth, and then again on December ninth. We attempted to send notices to a wide net of, again, surrounding neighbors and stakeholders in advance of those meetings. We we believe that we tried as hard as anyone possibly could really to to solicit feedback as far in advance as possible. This is not a proposal that's come up in the last few weeks or even the last few months. This is something that's been in the works for several months, and and as you can see from the slide in front of you, we've also listed some of the other intervening meetings that we've had during that time. So, this is, this has been a significant amount of work for us, again, over the course of the better part of ten months. This all culminated with a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The march, which can be approved unanimously with one condition, our proposal, that one condition, was the installation of ten eight-foot trees, just in an effort to show how serious we are about addressing the concerns that were raised by our neighbors and addressing the concern that we're discussing P and Z. We've already installed forty-three trees of ten to fourteen feet height, going far beyond what we felt was required of us under the under the P and Z conditions, and attempt again, to be as good neighbors as possible. Again, I want to come back to the the reason we're here. We're we're here to request an amendment to an existing site plan. That's a site plan that Marie Deville has the opportunity to follow and the opportunity to build. The criteria for the Board of Alderman's determination tonight is the same criteria that was before the P and Z, whether this is good planning practice and whether this is compatible with adjoining preventative development. And when I say this, I'm referring not to the installation of new buildings or or new construction. I'm referring specifically to the amendment to the site plan. I think it's very important that we focus, and I'd ask you all to focus on the binary choice, really, that's before you, the nineteen ninety-two plan or the amended plan that we've seen. The effect, we believe, is a a better of planning result for the City of Town and Country. It's compatible with adjoining development more so, in fact, I would argue than the nineteen ninety-two plan, which then involved the the two buildings on the southeastern corner of the site, which were essentially giving up. As I think was noted in the staff report to P and Z, the project as currently proposed is an improvement from the nineteen ninety-two plan in several key metrics. Floor area, room space, parking availability. Those are all, I think, shown on the comparison slide that's in front of you. We believe that the project's consistent with the goals of the city comprehensive plan, both as it existed when we first began discussions and as it's evolved over the intervening months, which I follow very closely and with great interest. And and I I note with with terrific assistance and input from from not only the neighbors, as I mentioned earlier, but also the city staff. For these reasons, we request your approval of the ordinance pending the site plan, and I thank you. We thank you for your time and consideration again this evening. Fritz, Fred, John, and I are here to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there questions of the presenter? Alderman Prouchy. You're on mute, ma'am.
Can you hear me now? All right. And I just wanted to give everybody an update on what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This item did come before us. It passed unanimously. The condition G, that seven, the seven proposed trees on the south side of the East Lake Building should have a minimum planting height of eight feet, was added at that time. As Marie Deville's representative has stated, they've already exceeded the number of trees to plant and the height of those trees. Ultimately, we had one resident come to speak, and a considerable amount of his discussion was regarding landscaping and the buffering in between. But other than that, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was actually quite quiet. We had a number of questions regarding the nineteen ninety-two plan. Those were all answered by our city council at the time. And essentially, as stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that this was a far superior plan to the one permitted under the nineteen ninety-two amended site development plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Further inquiry. Alderman Mortland.
Yes, we've we've had numerous contacts from the Devonworth citizens, and they wanted them to, at least since they can't stand up and have a say today, at least get some of the questions out that they had. First off, I know Tiffany just had had referenced the ninety-two plan and the status of ninety-two plan. Some of the Devonworth would like to, one, postpone this till they be can be in person, which we're we're going to see if we can work through some of this online here with the questions, but we we did submit and and send to Devonworth the website again today. But they wanted to know the ninety-two plan's status, were the changes made consistent to the plan? And has there been any amendments to the plan since ninety-two and any changes from that, I guess, the city attorney?
Is that you, counsel, or is that you, Mr. Gregwitz?
Oh, sorry.
That that would not be me.
Counsel, you're off now.
My understanding is that since that time, there may have been some minor changes, but I am not certain. Is your question, have there been any changes since the ninety-two plan?
It will. Has it been amended since ninety-two, which I don't think it has, was the question. And then the other question was, has there been any changes that are inconsistent with the ninety-two plan since since that was the the, I'm just reading the list of questions that they've asked me to ask.
Well, I get this is Tim Gregwitz. I guess the only thing I can speak to is the stormwater. I I did work with with their engineer, their civil site engineer, going back and forth, making sure that they met the one hundred and fifty percent requirement for the stormwater for their their current plan. I can't speak to the the nineteen ninety-two plan and and whether or not that was complied with stormwater, but I guess it did at that time. But alls I can say is that today's plan does meet the one hundred and fifty percent requirement for stormwater for these facilities.
Thank you, sir. Further inquiry. Alderman Mortland, do you have further questions from your constituents?
I I would say that the, you know, the the ward three constituents, they just, they wanted to really kind of go on record, where the biggest concern is around the height and the visibility on record. And I know they're doing stuff around the trees, but it's really around the size of the building and and the visibility, so.
Thank you. Alderman Benegas was next, seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to note that the Architecture Review Board reviewed this proposal on two separate occasions. It was continued on one occasion for some changes to be made. Marie Deville addressed all the issues that the Architecture Review Board had, and on its second reading, or excuse me, second hearing, the Architecture Review Board approved the proposal unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Continuing that with that, though, is I just want to state that I personally have been opposed to additional assisted living beds in Town and Country for some time now. My votes have reflected that. These facilities create unusually high density. They're an extraordinary tax on our emergency services, and Town and Country is already overbedded. And that's O V E R B E D D D. That term comes from Mr. Weisehan himself in a letter June twelfth of two thousand nineteen that was opposing the N H C or the Ryan Group proposal almost across the street from his development. So, when the Marie Deville's attorney states tonight that this proposal has been in the works for ten months, when this letter was written, Marie Deville was already proposing or already thinking about additional beds on their property. Mr. Weisehan wrote a letter that indicated that, number one, St. Louis County is overbedded. St. Charles County is overbedded. Town and Country is exceedingly overbedded. Town and Country recently approved Stonecrest. Town and Country recently approved Mason Point. And with the current number of beds now in Town and Country, the city's fire protection, police, EMS departments have acknowledged an increased demand on their services. So, in spite of writing that letter and June twelfth, Marie Deville was actively involved in being preparing to bring this proposal to the board. So, so they oppose a a proposal across the street that was lower density than theirs, all the while preparing their own. In recent days, significant neighbor neighbor concern have come to light, and and then one other issue is the nineteen ninety-two site development plan is, needs to be reviewed and is a bit suspect as to how that plan was approved. So, I would, I I plan on voting no on this, or I'm also in favor of a continuance of this item.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Reuters was next, seeking recognition.
Thank you. One thing that is common is that nineteen ninety-two is a long time ago. And to to ask a question to the applicant, the the question is, why now, after all these years? I think there's also one of the questions a neighbor had said is, this, would it, what's the expiration date, for lack of a better term, on such a final site plan? Does it have one? Back then, Devonworth was not into, not around, and the question was, does that change things or not? In regards to how that site development plan was was passed, I I'll give more interpretation than a question, and I don't right or wrong, but I don't know if I can go back twenty-eight years ago and and see if that was done right or wrong. But if that is kind of the accepted norm that's been adopted, I don't think it's the right time to be critical. But I'm happy to plead, I'm not the expert in that, so I'd like a legal opinion. But in regards to the question to the applicant, I I think it's important to know why now and not, you know, thirty-some years ago.
This is John Jokas.
Mr. Jokers, Mr. Jokers, you need to wait to be recognized, please.
Yes, certainly, yep.
Thank you. And I and I certainly will call on you to to respond to those inquiries. I just wanted to allow the board further opportunity to comment. Alderman Butler.
Thank you. So, sitting through this for the many months of listening to the plans that were talked about with the Weisehan family and Marie Deville and seeing these plans and not attending the planning and zoning meeting and not really hearing any feedback from the neighbors that were affected, I think only one person actually attended that meeting to have objection to it. And so, it is a little odd that now, right here at the very last second, they're claiming that they didn't know, but we know that they did know. So, I don't know why they weren't giving feedback previously. And additionally, this board, and maybe not meaning each of us individual members, because, you know, boards are different each year or can be. This board has multiple times agreed to allow more beds in our town. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we have, we allowed Stonecrest in twenty fifteen and Mason Point, which is, I think, in a similar situation where they were approved for additional beds a really long time ago. And the board had to say, okay, this is a site plan that was approved a long time ago. These were beds that were approved a long time ago, and so, here you are. So, for me, the difference between the Clarendale issue, which I think was brought up a couple of times in some of the letters, and tonight, I think, where we were claiming that the applicant is, you know, against one thing and for themselves, that is different. That is a turnover of land that could be going back to the original underlying zoning, and that was a rezoning, and that was a new business. So, for me to look at this and say, this city and Sharon Rothmel, who is a very good and very strict black-and-white planning director, I think she was, to say that this is what was okay and this is what fit our city ordinance is, I'm very comfortable moving forward tonight, and I'm very comfortable, you know, with the vote that I have based on the facts. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Allen's next, seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I do appreciate Marie Deville. They're a good business. They're engaged. They've been supportive of the city. They have the history. They've had the presence. They're also a business. And so, over the two years I've been in, I I've recognized a great amount of activities and support, but also, at the same time, I've recognized that this is what you do when you have a business. And it certainly benefits the business having the presence. I guess my concern is, how does this expansion benefit Town and Country? And I think those are questions that, when we look at how things are approved within any of the the Town or Planning and Zoning or everything we do, it's how does this affect or how does it benefit Town and Country? Certainly, where we are right now and prior to the world we live in today with the virus, we were, certainly I was looking forward to what we do as proceeding in this by December thirty-first with our fire and EMS contract. The current commissioner and previous commissioner for police and fire, since I have, you know, for two years, we've heard the the amount of burden, extensive burden that these type of services do add. We certainly heard it, and I did go to the planning and zoning for Clarendale as long as, well, I wasn't there till, I guess it was eleven o'clock, but I was there for two or three hours. And and so, that is is a significant concern. And I just, at the time, and I knew this was coming with Marie Deville when I sat looking at the group, the citizens, a public outcry against Clarendale. And I find it interesting that, yes, we do have some people along Devonshire, the the immediate residents, but but there has been almost no public outcry. We have no signs on even Wyman or Clayton. This will impact the traffic, the construction, and also additional services and 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 beds. So, I find that interesting, that we've not been able to hear maybe as much of a public outcry for whatever reason. I do appreciate, and I do believe that businesses have every ability to go as far as they can in in how they expand and grow their business. I appreciate that. But at this point, my my main concern is the cost to Town and Country and and dollar costs. And now with what, you know, our certainly critical financial status, it's even a bigger concern. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate all those comments. Mr. Jokas, you have heard the concerns of the board. I'll give you the final word, sir, to respond and would encourage you to to be as succinct and to the point as you possibly can. to respond and would encourage you to, to be as succinct and to the point as you possibly can. Counsel. Mr. Jokers.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. Thank you for the recognition and for the extra time. I'll be succinct. I would like to respond to some of the questions that were raised directly to us. I think one of the first from Alderman Reuter was why now? I don't believe that there's an expiration in the 1992 site plan. But as I've stated, this is a plan that really has governed the site for decades and has evolved over the decades. The use of the property has in accordance with that plan. I would also like to note that the number of beds, because there were some references to beds this evening, the, the number of beds that we're actually permitted to have on site is far greater than the number that we will have even once this, these projects are built. As I mentioned at the outset, part of this is moving our business model from more of a dual occupancy centered paradigm to more of a single occupancy. So we're not actually increasing the number of beds that we're allowed to have under this proposal. I think that's very important to note. In terms of how this will benefit Town and Country, as I've said, we believe that this is a better proposal in the long run for the city on, on multiple levels. It removes buildings from the southern and eastern building lines and concentrates some of that closer to the center of the site. We've operated this property for 60 years in this location and are very familiar with the most efficient way to do so. And we believe we can do so in a manner that won't unduly burden the city's resources.
Thank you.
I tried to very quickly and succinctly address those questions, but happy to answer any more, Mr. Mayor or members of the board.
And I for one greatly appreciate that. Motion's been made, seconded, discussed, and the applicant has had this substantial opportunity to present and respond to any inquiries. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Reuter?
Aye.
Alderman Prouchy?
Aye.
Alderman Benegas?
Nay.
Alderman Allen?
Nay.
Alderman Butler?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
And Alderman Mortland? So recording Alderman Mortland's vote as a nay? The bill fails four to three.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, under the topic of new business, is the architectural review associated with the Marie Deville project. And Counsel, does that matter moot now? You're open. No, you just turned yourself off, Steve.
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the architectural review. Motion.
Second.
Alderman Prouchy moves approval. Alderman Butler seconds. Discussion regarding the architectural review. Alderman Reuter.
I don't understand why, if, if this isn't moot or?
It, it is not moot, according to our counsel. And, and so the approval of this design is, is before the body. The authority to proceed on it has been rejected. A separate question, so I agree with Counsel, and the matter's still before us. Further discussion. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Prouchy, are you seeking recognition? You got a blue.
I am not.
Okay, thank you. All of the opinion, the architectural review should be approved. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The architectural review motion carries unanimously. We're on item number three. It's the approval of a purchase order to Don Brown Chevrolet for two 2020 Chevrolet Tahos in the amount of $60,980. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Alderman Butler, seconded by Alderman Prouchy. The matter's before the body. Discussion. Seeing none. Please wave. I, I've, I've got three screens and, yeah, thank you. Alderman Butler seeking recognition.
You, you guys all received the email from Chief Cavens. So you have all the information you need, why we're doing it this way, and how we're getting the cost savings there. So with these purchases of the vehicles, but he's on the line, so if you have any questions, there you go.
Further discussion. Alderman Allen, were you seeking recognition?
I was, Mayor. I just want to say I did talk to the chief today and he, you know, I mean, this is something we need to do again with, in light of all of our budget challenges, this does support our public safety. And it's fiscally responsible, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Further debate. Seeing none. All of the opinion, the purchase order should be approved. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We're on item number four. It's a resolution, R03, 2020. A resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Regional Justice Information Service Commission, Regis, and the City of Town and Country for the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance, FY 2017 Body worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program Grant. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Butler moved approval. Alderman Prouchy. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Prouchy seconded that motion that's before the body. Discussion. Seeing none. All of the opinion, the motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five on our agenda is Bill 20-18. It's an ordinance approving a conditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a children's playhouse located at 1414 Topping Road in the City of Town and Country. First, I'd like a sponsor for that matter. Alderman Holman?
Yes.
Thank you. And without objection, with the city clerk, please read that bill for the first.
Bill number 2018 is an ordinance approving a conditional use, authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a children's playhouse located at 1414 Topping Road in the City of Town and Country.
Thank you. Bill 20-18 is continued to the meeting of Monday, April 27th for a second reading and consideration. Item number six on our agenda is Bill 20-19. It's a, an ordinance approving a conditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a pool located at 23 Brookwood Road in the City of Town and Country. Would the Ward Two Alder persons like to sponsor that bill?
Yes.
And Alderman Butler?
Sure. Thanks.
And as much as we have not had a public hearing on it, I'll entertain a motion to continue that matter.
Make a motion to continue the matter to the next meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Butler makes the motion to continue.
Second.
Alderman Allen seconded the matter. Discussion regarding the continuance motion. Seeing none. All of the opinion, the continuance motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Continuance motion carries unanimously. Would the same two sponsors wish to sponsor items number seven and eight?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I will, I'll entertain a motion to continue item number seven and item number eight to the meeting of April 27th.
So moved.
Is that gaining second?
Second.
Alderman Benegas, are you seeking recognition or are you seconding the motion?
Point of order, Mayor. We're continuing a, a new business?
We're continuing the first reading, yes.
Because we helped, we didn't hold a public hearing.
So Alderman Benegas, my thinking is that the public hearing affords the public the opportunity to participate in the discussion, and then two readings of the bill give them the opportunity to further engage in that process. To first read it tonight without having considered the matter in public hearing, I think is a disservice to our.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Further discussion regarding the continuance, Madam Clerk of items seven and eight. Seeing none. All of the opinion, that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. The continuance matter, uh, motion carries unanimously. We're on item number nine. It's Bill 20-22. I could use a sponsor, please.
Allen.
Thank you.
Benegas.
Madam Clerk, would you please read that, without objection, would you please read that bill for the first time?
Bill number 2022 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute intergovernmental cooperation agreement with both the Brenwick Community Improvement District and St. Louis County, as well as authorizing an interest-bearing loan to the Brenwick Community Improvement District for related roadway improvements. And Mayor, for the rest.
Please proceed. Yes, ma'am.
I'll be entering one letter from Mark Johnson dated April 8th, 2020. It's consisting of one page into the record. That letter was previously distributed to the board.
And I would note, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'd note for the record that Mr. Johnson has been with us throughout the proceedings this evening. He is, I'm assuming, here for purposes of answering any inquiry. I'm not prepared to take inquiry tonight because the matter's on first reading, but I did want the, the record to reflect that he, in representing his subdivision, is, is participating in tonight's meeting. Thank you, Mark, for being here and joining us. The matter's, Bill 20-22 is continued to the meeting of Monday, April 22nd for a second reading and consideration. Item number 10 on our agenda is Resolution R04-2020. It's a resolution of the City of Town and Country enacting certain emergency measures to protect the public health and safety during the present COVID-19 pandemic. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Butler moves approval. Does it gain a second?
Second.
Alderman Prouchy seconds the motion. Discussion. Seeing none. All of the opinion, that resolution should be approved. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion. Thank you. Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We are on item number 11. It's our warrant list. It's from the meeting of, the facsimile meeting of March 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $1,208,354.60. It was approved unanimously via email, but now I'll entertain a motion to approve that this evening.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Allen moved approval. Alderman Holman seconded that motion. Discussion. Alderman Butler seeking recognition.
And so just to verify that all of the questions that I asked and the answers given by staff, because I did have questions about the validity of some of the expenses that we were making since we were in a situation where we were only needing to make necessary payments. And I was told that because a lot of the expenses that I had questions about were already purchased, we needed to pay our bills. I just wanted to make sure that those were included. For the record, I think they were. But I, I did have quite a lot of concern about the last warrant list, and I do have concern about this warrant list as well, but we'll talk about those in a sec. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Butler. I, I reviewed your inquiries. I appreciate it the same, and I believe that the staff has been very responsive. Alderman Reuter seeking recognition, and you're on mute, sir.
Appreciate that. So I'm, I'm happy to move forward with the warrant list, just given the new situation we're in. I'm concerned about if this is the appropriate order of business, because when we are voting for the warrant list, we are already approving things that have been budgeted for and have been purchased.
Have new purchased.
Hold on.
Correct. So my concern would be that should we be looking at how we are making expenditures a lot differently rather than just what is under budget and consider a, a different way? I'm not sure if that is necessarily the Board of Aldermen's duty, but I would hope that there's extra steps being taken to give extra scrutiny to any purchase in the short term.
Yes, the next one, point Alderman and, and the city administrator, the finance director, myself, and others on the staff, including the chief and Ms. Nixon and others have been critically, and Mr. Gregowitz, really everybody in City Hall critically analyzing these, these matters. This, this, as you remember, this, this, these expenditures were approved unanimously by the board. They were done so by email, and tonight's verbal motion and confirmation is an affirmation of that. It does not mean that you can't reverse your prior approval, but your point's a larger one. The larger one is, we need to look at our current budget and make very difficult decisions going forward. I have been in consultation with mayors throughout the region. We have, we have a weekly teleconference, share best practices. We are helping each other think through the various options that exist. And, and I'm, I'm pleased to report that we are in a better situation than many of our colleagues in the community, in the region. But that, that doesn't mean we're immune from the economic impact of these. So the board's inquiries are very well placed. And what's before us right now is the affirmation of the prior approval of the warrant list. Further discussion. See, somebody, I'm looking in three different directions. And by the way, your, your position on my screen changes, so it's hard to track. It's hard to track not only your interest in, in commenting, but also your, your. In any event, seeing none. All of the opinion, that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We are now on, we are now on the item of, Madam Clerk, you, you have, is this, this is all under item number 11? It's a second meeting of April 13th. The warrant list for this evening, I'm sorry, my notes were, were transposed. The warrant list from this evening in the amount of $174,750.92. Prove that warrant.
So moved.
Alderman Mortland moves approval.
Second.
Alderman Allen seconds the motion. The matter's before the body. Discussion. Alderman Butler.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I think I've sent some of them in, but I wanted to have them verified on the record. So on this warrant list, I had concern about the last warrant list with some of the things that we're spending in the Parks Department, especially right now where we are kind of in a emergency zone where we have a lot of expenses going out. Our police and expenses and the expenses for our municipal department, everything are going up where we are purchasing things that we normally wouldn't purchase, masks, additional antibacterial things, cleaning things more often. I would like to ask specifically about the vendor 4184 Barco products where it's bulletin cord, bulletin boards for Town Square to the tune of $1,446,000, $1,400, $1,446. I'm not sure why that's a necessity at this time and this place. We, and I realize we probably already purchased them, so me saying no is just us not paying a credit card bill, but I don't think that's a necessity at this moment. I think we really should be going bare bones. Where we're just paying the, the things that we have to pay right now. We, we have First Watch just closed 100% of all of their locations. That's the sales tax for us. We have several businesses, or all of our, most of our businesses are closed right now. So we're not in a good situation where we can just be willy-nilly filling our parks with extra stuff. I think we should be really looking at how we're spending some of these. So that's my first question is, can we take that out or can, is that already installed? And perhaps going forward, let's not do those kinds of things. Because, I mean, the governor just sent out the thing that we're going to be possibly extending this stay-at-home order for a while. So this, this is not coming to an end anytime soon. Then the, my second question regarding the warrant list, let me see if I have it highlighted. If not. The vendor 4242287 is restroom supplies. That was from 3/20. We had already gone into lockdown, so I'm not really sure why our Parks Department is. so I'm not really sure why our Parks Department is restocking the restrooms when they're being closed. Um, but that seems like some money that we could have been saving there. The vendor four-one-eight-four, which is Barco Products, oh, that was that, that same thing. Um, and then I do have a question, which I think Bob had answered, the vendor six-three-five-seven, I'm sorry, I'm saying these, it's for Pam's benefit, in case she's the one that answers, uh, Creek Maintenance, that was, were a very small amount of money, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, but my question regarding that, because I was up there walking with my dog and my kids, because it's in our backyard, um, there's a lot of algae there, so to see that we're paying a bill for cleaning that, and then going up there this week and seeing that it's not clean, and then having the reply that this is an ongoing issue that we're gonna have, and that we need to continually do this, means that something was not put in correctly, so I would like that addressed, because knowing that we're gonna have this ongoing issue seems like a, a major budgetary concern, that maybe we didn't have previously input into our budget, so I would like that addressed as well. And then I would love some answers for the Terry Jones deposit for a concert at Town Square to the tune of fifteen hundred dollars. Um, not knowing the status of where we are right now with Corona and being able to be in big groups again, I do realize that October is a pretty far away, and we wanna make sure we have someone, but there's gonna be a lot of cancellations, and so should we be looking at fourteen hundred dollars for bulletin boards, fifteen hundred dollars for a concert that we're not sure we're gonna have, plus all of these other expenses in there that maybe we can hold off? I would just like to make sure that we're really checking into this budget and making sure we're not doing these little ancillary things when we have a major decrease in our revenue, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman, you can rest assured that we are, we are in fact critically analyzing all of these. Yours, your point, and Alderman Reuter's point about, uh, looking at, um, ways that we can protect our financial interests on a go-forward basis is very well-placed, and we are working daily to that end. I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Nixon and Ms. Rice to, uh, you can tag team if you want to, to comment generally on these, um, matters, so that we're responsive to Alderman Butler's inquiry, but that the larger point, I think, is front and center, and rest assured, the message has been received, uh, Ms. Nixon, you're first.
I can go ahead and address the specific questions, um, but first, for the overall budget, we're definitely looking on at expenditures moving forward as only operational necessities only. Uh, the bulletin boards were ordered four to six weeks ago, so it was sort of before the, um, you know, bulk of the, before we have the lockdown and, uh, stay-at-home order. Um, the toilet paper, we placed that order so that we could prepare for the, for the paper shortage, to be quite honest, so that when the parks do open back up, we have toilet paper to supply. Uh, and then for the concerts, we've, we've canceled all of the concerts, um, essentially not putting any deposits down until October, and so that's, that's really the only deposit for music, uh, for the season.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Rice, you, did, was there anything that Ms. Nixon did not comment upon?
I don't believe so, I think she answered all the questions that were, um, asked by Alderman Butler. Uh, I would just make a general comment that we, uh, the directors and I spent quite a bit of time last week going through the existing budget line by line, and trying to identify areas where we can, uh, cut back or just, um, delay, you know, delay things maybe until July to see what the situation is, or just delay until, uh, twenty twenty-one. So we are looking at everything, uh, very carefully going forward, things that are done are kind of done, but, but we're working moving forward.
Thank you, Alderman Allen was next seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to, um, again, weigh in, I did talk to Mr. Shelton today and Ms. Rice, and, um, you know, I think it's very important if we look through, um, our warrant list consistently, and, and we have, um, uh, always items, insurances, and different things that, um, we always have to pay, but, uh, and certainly maintenance of properties, um, uh, I'm gonna, uh, recognize, we have intelligence staff. Uh, we certainly need to maintain, uh, infrastructure and properties and landscaping, so they don't die and we don't lose them, but, um, you know, talking that we will, should have no new projects, we should pay our bills that, uh, we've already incurred, because we want to be good stewards of what we've done before, but certainly, um, any projects, uh, construction with any of the trails, anything, uh, that was not a previous commitment, yes, should be on hold, and, um, you know, our, our goal and our commitment is, is safety of our, our citizens. We are planning for the worst, but hoping for the best.
Thank you, okay, the motion's been made, seconded, and fully discussed, uh, all of the opinion that motion should, oh, Alderman Butler seeking recognition for the final word.
Thank you, um, one of the questions that was not answered was the, um, payment for vendors six-three-five-seven for the Greenwood Group for Creek Maintenance, and the response that I received, which I passed along to the entirety of the board, I believe, I hope so it went through, um, was that this would be an ongoing issue that we would have with algae being in the, um, creek area of Town Square. So yeah, I would like an update on that, because that was not something that the board was apprised of when the people that were here, uh, approved of that creek, so I would just love to know.
Yep, we understand.
What's being done about that, because we have to approve that tonight, that expense.
Yeah, I understand, Ms. Nixon, can you respond to the Butler, to Alderman Butler's, uh, inquiry, please?
Sure, uh, if you remember, during the design of Town Square, the recirculating water system was changed a number of times, and so the elimination of chlorinating that waterfall and that waterscape, um, completely changes the water quality, and so, you know, you have, you have basically have pond water cascading over a few inches, uh, in depth over the rocks, and so it, it will be an ongoing expense for the maintenance to, and, and will need to be done weekly to clean that out, and we manually shut it down and have that scape cleaned out.
Thank you, that, uh, we, we're done talking about pond scum. Further, uh, discussion, seeing none, all of the opinion, the motion to approve the warrant list should, uh, should be approved, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the, uh, any of the contrary opinion, nay.
Nay.
Madam, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, please recognize Alderman Butler as a nay. It was a good discussion, that discussion will continue because it is critically important, and I appreciate the inquiry from the board and the responses from the staff. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Motion.
Alderman Reuter, Alderman Reuter seeking recognition.
So, uh, good work so far with, uh, navigating this meeting, but I, I'm not sure if I have the right method of doing so, but is it possible to make a motion or reconsider, uh, vote on the, the first ordinance that we voted on tonight? And I can expound if given permission.
So, um, a, a motion to reconsider is in order if it is made by somebody on the prevailing side. And, uh, so that, that would need to be, um, and that would, obviously, that's somebody that voted in the negative. Further discussion.
Am I, am I allowed to make my case at all further, or is it a?
Not if there's not a motion before the body, you, did you vote, did you vote aye, sir?
I voted aye, there were four in affirmative, correct.
Yeah, the, the prevailing is not nay.
Alderman Butler.
The prevailing response was not nay, we just failed for lack of majority.
Alderman Butler, if you'd let me explain, if, um, if it were not the prevailing side, the motion would have carried. The, a, the, in order to move to reconsider, someone voting, uh, in the negative must make that motion, because that was the prevailing side. Alderman Bennigus was next seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mayor, under, under other, I'd wondered if you'd allow for a little bit of a discussion regarding, um, the purchase items and what the directive is to staff in regards to that. And, um, and the second item I'd like to add to under, under other is a briefing on Town Square, and what's going into, uh, the building there, and why we haven't received updates in regard to that, would you allow those items?
I, I would encourage you to, uh, visit with staff, um, they are constantly available, uh, most notably, Mr. Shelton, who, uh, runs a very talented team, and, uh, um, and so anything regarding Town Square is, uh, is very, very, uh, relevant to our discussions, and he will update you, uh, at any time, I don't think it now is the proper time. I will tell you that, that I will be coming forth with a strategy for the board, uh, to, to brief the board on. It's really, it's, it's not a legislative matter, unless and until we're modifying the budget, but we, we, uh, have, we need more data, and we, um, and we will be in short order developing a plan in response to your first inquiry, Alderman Bennigus, and that is, what are we gonna do from an economic standpoint? Uh, and, and we are considering all of our options, nothing is off the table. But we want to prioritize those options, and I'm, and, and we have not completed accumulating the data, uh, sufficiently to make a, um, appropriate report to the board.
Well, we're under extraordinary times, Mayor, and I, I just wanted to be clear with staff as to what the will of the board is, and give them opportunity to be clear from our side what that is. So, it would seem like that would require a bit of a discussion among the board, I know it's a little bit extraordinary the way we handle business, but at least a brief discussion about that would seem appropriate. And it's my understanding that briefings regarding Town Square were to be made regularly, and we haven't received those. And there's things of concern that are, are happening there that I haven't heard a single word about. So, uh, now may not be the right time, but it needs to happen board-wide, in my opinion.
I agree, John.
Okay. We still follow, even electronically, parliamentary procedures in basic, um, manners, so please don't be shouting out. But, uh, I hear you loud and clear, and, uh, it is my intention, and Mr. Shelton and I have been working over the last week, it is my intention to, uh, bring reports on the financial matters, because we are going to have to make our decisions, and I don't expect this board to be making them with, in the absence of any knowledge or any information that they would require. So, uh, you know, we have a retreat coming up, um, and hopefully we will be in a position to do that, um, uh, in person, but I don't know that we'll be there, so in the very near future, uh, perhaps the next meeting, we will come with, with an interim report, and then that will be followed up with further reports, and, um, and we will, uh, ultimately, uh, equip the board with all the information they need to make, uh, these tough decisions. But they, they need to start with staff, and, um, and as I said before, we're just not in a position, with the fluid nature of, of the data, we only have, we only have a matter of one month's data collected, uh, and that, that doesn't show the true impact, uh, that is, that this pandemic is gonna have on our economy. And so, it is, uh, we need to consider that, and we will be bringing that report forward, so.
Mayor, if you, Mayor, if you would allow, just to be clear, so, has staff been instructed, the directors explicitly to, for expenditures to only be based on necessity and the level of need or maintenance? So, absolute necessity maintenance and absolute necessity need for all purchases?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, I want to close by thanking the board, I want to thank, oh, Alderman Mortland seeking recognition.
So, um, you know, I, I guess I'd like to, to, you know, reconsider Bill twenty seventeen to, to motion to continue the matter.
The motion's been made, uh, by Alderman Mortland to reconsider, um, Bill, I'm just sorry, sir, uh, twenty dash seventeen, does that motion gain any second?
I second it.
Uh, counsel, Mr. Garrett, you're on mute, sir. Thank you, does the, does, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident, in my opinion, irrespective of those on the board that might differ, that the motion needed to be made by somebody voting on the prevailing side. Does the second also have to be made by somebody voting on the prevailing side?
No.
The motion's been made and seconded to reconsider Bill twenty dash seventeen. Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I agree with that, I was going to, uh, try to get recognition, to ask for the reconsideration. I guess I would like to know what, how would we expect that process to move forward, uh, in any official way or any structured way?
Well, Alderman, the, the, um, this is just an amendment to the final site development plan, and, um, if it is, if it is, uh, the motion's made, uh, seconded and carried, then, uh, the matter would be back before the body.
Next meeting?
No, it would be back before the body this evening.
This evening, okay.
Now, it would be subject to a continuance motion, but I'm not suggesting anything by that, I'm just saying the body, the, the motion that's made by Alderman Mortland, and seconded by Alderman.
Me.
Allen, is that the matter be reconsidered, that motion would need to carry. Once that motion carries, then the matter is, item twenty dash seventeen is before us on second read.
Okay.
Alderman, no, I'm sorry, Alderman Reuter was next seeking recognition.
Thank you, so the whole rationale with, with making the reconsideration is, I think a better move for us would have been to continue. Uh, I think some of the technology may have made that a little bit more difficult, but I, I, what my fear is, that if we vote this down as is, um, I think some of the concerns that I heard about more EMS, more beds, I, I think what's approved is gonna be worse, so I think that's gonna be worse for the residents, I think it's gonna be worse for the city, and, and I think it's worth dialoguing a little bit more, giving this another two weeks, if not longer, to, um, make sure that we are making the, the best decision. This is something that I, I first heard about close to a year ago, and so to, um, to, to have something that's been worked on that long, to have objections that really haven't been shared up until maybe Friday of last week to vote this project down, I, I don't really think this is a project similar to Clarendale, but when I think about all the, the, the debate and community input that went into that, and never hit our body, uh, as the board, it just, it stopped at planning and zoning. But I, I do think, um, you know, at least giving us two more weeks to, to consider, um, maybe a, a benefit from the city and to the board, and the residents even.
Alderman, I think your, uh, I think your words make a lot of sense. A further discussion regarding the reconsideration motion, Alderman Bennigus.
The motion I heard was for continuance, or, does it have to be reconsidered and then move, then a continuance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to reconsider Bill twenty dash seventeen, seeing none. All of the opinion that motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. Motion to reconsider carries unanimously, Bill twenty dash seventeen is before the body. I'll entertain a motion to continue that project to the meeting of April twenty-seventh.
So moved.
So moved, uh, Alderman Mortland moved to continue, Alderman Reuter seconded the, uh, discussion regarding the continuance motion. Seeing none, all of the opinion that motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those of the contrary opinion, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and if counsel. or the applicant is still on the phone, I'm going to recognize you in a second, Alderman. If, if anybody associated with this project is on the phone, I would highly encourage you to engage in conversations with Devonworth and all other interested parties. Alderman Reuters seeking recognition.
Thank you. This was on my schedule for being the last meeting. As Alderman, we're supposed to have an election, I believe, last week, and I, I think these things are important to, to look at. If we had many different people who were running for election, that would be one thing, but I know for my ward, there's only one person representing, or one person who was going to be on the ballot. I know for Ward 1, Pam's done an admirable job for a long time by herself, but there is somebody that was set to be sworn in in two weeks. So, I would, for, for me specifically, if my replacement, who would be Jeff Whitmire, was to stand in, I would be in favor of having a special meeting to allow that to happen next meeting, and I would also give strong consideration to doing that for other wards where appropriate.
Thank you, Alderman. I, I recognize the, the situation where these elections were uncontested. The, the write-in process existed at the last time I was encouraged to, to consider certain appointments, and I was not in the, in the closing days of an election going to put my ability to appoint somebody into the equation. But, you've described the situation that's very different now, and, and I'd be glad to discuss that with any of the Aldermen that are not seeking reelection. So, Alderman Butler, Alderman Reuters, all may let me know your intentions. We don't need to discuss the matter now, because those would take appointments, and I'm not interested in having a Board that doesn't have the, the capacity to function anymore than we currently have right now. So, in closing, thank you to each and every one of you. This is, this has not been easy, but you've made it easy tonight. We, I think it's a testament to the collegiality of this Board and the way we, we debate and consider issues, that we, we got through this, particularly with somebody that's, that's charged with running the meeting that is technologically challenged. So, thank you very much. You too, Mr. Shelton and, and the staff. This didn't happen on its own, and you put a lot of thought, Madam Clerk and others, into this. And lastly, and, and perhaps most significantly, Morton, this, we're only all communicating effectively, because you were able to push our buttons, as the saying goes.
Literally.
Yeah, that's right. And so, Ms. Kepfert, thank you. Thank you for being smarter than I am in all things technological, and thank you for holding this, this meeting together. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I moved.
Alderman Allen moved. Alderman Frauci seconded, and all of the opinion we should adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. Thank you, one and all. Have a evening. Stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll be in touch soon.
Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.